It's 3:00 P.M. The item that we'd like to, an agenda item that I'd like to bring forward before we enter into executive session, it was county council's item and had to do with announcements and questions. So Commissioner Swanson, I believe, has a question.
I received an inquiry from one of my constituents about the involvement of the state of Oregon, federal government, counties in Oregon, cities in Oregon, and I distilled the constituents' concern down to, you know, would Lane County be able to recover some of the costs that we've had associated with providing law enforcement services in Harney County in connection with the attack on the federal wildlife refuge, but more specifically, our law enforcement is backing up Harney County law enforcement because they are having all kinds of issues that the county sheriff has to deal with. And so Sheriff Trapp informed me that we had sent a command officer, two uniformed deputies, and a public information officer for at least one week. Apparently Harney County paid for the motel for our folks, and I don't know if we've spent more money than that, but the constituent wanted to know, you know, could these local governments get back their money from either the federal co-defendants or the state or somebody else? I don't know what the answer is. I suspect the answer is no, but I had a chance to talk to Mr. Dingell briefly about this, and I think he can say more definitively the answer is no, but I don't know. But I just wanted to ask him on the record about this so that, you know, we can kind of dispense with this problem.
Commissioner Sturtevant, Commissioner Swanson, yes. I think you need to split it into two parts. You mentioned state and federal. It's my understanding from an email that I believe Sheriff Trapp sent and previous conversations with him that the assistance that's being provided to Harney County is pursuant to essentially the mutual aid doctrine. It's my understanding that there has been no expectation or understanding that Harney County would reimburse Lane County for those services. So the answer to that question is no, and just so your constituent understands, the sheriff, I think, has explained very well that different sheriff's offices, you mentioned the situation in Cottage Grove, we all know what happened with Uncoah Community College. Essentially, the sheriffs have determined that by the time you work out all the administrative costs, that it all sort of works out in the end over time, everybody gets assistance from everybody. So with respect to getting reimbursement from Harney County, I think the answer is pretty definitively no. Now, with respect to the federal government, I don't know what arrangements have been made, and I don't know, and as you know, as a legislator, if somebody, you know, made a stint, could Congress authorize a bill for some sort of local reinstatement theoretically? Yes. Again, I don't believe that our law enforcement services have been provided or conditioned upon any expectation of repayment. So I think it would strictly, any money that would come from the federal government would have to be as part of some sort of legislative process. Does that make sense in answering your questions?
Yeah, I think that the constituent wasn't really concerned about Harney County. I think they were more concerned about the state and federal government, and I think you've answered this question pretty thoroughly. As far as the co-defendant situation, I just think that's fairly rare, but it might be even not possible, physically not possible.
I think it just, all of this generally falls under the category of what I just loosely describe as the mutual aid doctrine among law enforcement agencies, and it's sort of generally understood that what goes around comes around, and someday you'll be, you may be the donor, but someday you'll be the recipient.
Well, we certainly needed it in the case of the Cottage Grove situation where our own deputy was shot, and we needed law enforcement right away, and so we don't go through a big, you know, request for proposals, we don't go through competitive bidding, the officers just show up from the other jurisdictions, and that's the way we'd like it, that's the way other people would like it.
And there's no contract. And just so you know, I mean, they really do work, they do work this out. I believe the understanding is that, for example, any of the injuries belong, they're our employee. You know, if they become injured on the job over there, it's our workers' comp claim, they work overtime, it's our overtime claim, all of that, it's just like they're working here.
Thank you.
All right. Any other questions for the other commissioners?
Just real quickly, and just to comment on that, so when your University of Oregon was going through issues with Halloween night, I think we remember those, and the call for service that Eugene Police were involved in, it was pretty common for Springfield Police to actually be in the jurisdiction of Eugene by a backup, and I think it's just an agreement that the law enforcement has, so, you know, so thanks for mentioning that. And Commissioner, I think that's a great example, Cottage Grove.
And actually, another more local example that happens frequently, this happens, we're talking about on a statewide basis, but it happens nearly every day on a local basis where, for example, if the sheriff's office received an emergency call for service and the nearest agency was Coburn Police Department, for example, they would make a request of Coburn Police Department by terms of mutual aid to respond to a call, because they could get there first.
Fire and消防s obviously has mutual aid because the fire expires in Springfield. I think that requires services from the state. Thank you.
Okay. Good question. Well, at this time, I'd like to call into executive session, the Board of Commissioners. The Board of County Commissioners will meet in executive session to consult with county council concerning the illegal rights and duties of a public body with regard to current litigation or litigation likely to file. This executive session is held pursuant to O.R.S. 192.660 subsection to subsection 8, which allows the Board of Commissioners to meet in executive session for the purposes listed above. Representatives of the news media and the designated staff shall be allowed to attend the executive session. All other members of the audience are asked to leave the room. Representatives of the news media are specifically directed not to report on any other deliberations during the executive session except to state the general subject of the session as previously announced. No decisions will be made in executive session. We do reserve the right to come back into public session should the need arise. So with that, we're in executive session. All right. I'd like to reconvene the Board of Commissioners back into regular session, and we discussed the O.N.C. litigation was one of the items that we discussed in executive session. There is a decision point that needs to be made for budgetary purposes and to help signal to the O.N.C. board as to how they might proceed financing for potential litigation in the future. So I'd like to look to my colleagues. We are being asked, as Lane County, one of seventeen participants potentially with the O.N.C. board, that if at some point they decide to challenge the recorded decision with the new BLM Resource Management Plan, there is a proposal that Lane County would pay seventeen percent of a projected $530,000 expense that would take us through initial litigation, and one appeal is the projected amount. And that amount that Lane County is being asked to consider in the special litigation assessment would be approximately $84,000. It's a little bit less, but that would be what we're being asked for. It also can be paid in two payments, most likely with the end in this fiscal year and the future fiscal year. So I'd like to open up this discussion, and maybe, Mr. Mokaiewski, you might want to, I think you've known about this potential request. Is it something that the administration can handle if the board decided to move forward with participating?
Yeah, we've looked at it, and I think this is certainly a policy decision for the board, and it's, while the dollar amount is not insignificant, I don't think it's certainly insurmountable for us, given what's at stake from the standpoint of long-term funding for our organization for critical services. So if the board decides from a policy perspective that this litigation you want to pursue, we will make sure that we identify the resources in the current year's budget, and that was my understanding, is the current fiscal year as well as next fiscal year would be the commitment.
Yes. I would mention also that this does not mean that--
Sixteen, seventeen, eighteen.
Next fiscal year and the fiscal year after that. I stand corrected, so that, which actually provides better, I'm sorry, Mr. Chair, I think gives us the ability to plan for the budget next year and then the year after.
Okay. I would add that this does not mean that this is a for-sure action that the O.N.C. board would take. There is a chance that the BLM in the next two to three months is going to release their final environmental impact statement and sign the recorded decision. If that proposal is different than what the preferred alternative is, and it meets the expectation of the O.N.C. board members, then they would move forward with action, and they would refund the special assessment back to the counties that provided that. So that is a little bit of an unknown, there's definitely not a guarantee, but what the concern here is, is that it clearly states in the O.N.C. Act a minimum threshold of 500 million worth of feed that would be harvested per year on a sustainable basis, and the alternative that has been selected for further consideration turned to somewhere between 250 to 350 million, which is considerably less than what the law calls for. So that would be one of the basis of concern moving forward. So is there any questions or comments?
Mr. Chair, I did make a suggestion to Mr. Mokaiewski that there is a little bit of time left in this year, and that if, to give the maximum flexibility, if the board wanted, if any motion would say, any funds that would be available this year, and the balance would be paid in FY sixteen, seventeen, and FY seventeen, eighteen, that would actually give a little more flexibility to do that. So just, that would need to be in the motion, if that was the board's design.
All right. Yes, I'm looking at my colleagues to see if there's any interest.
So the cost of the litigation could be maybe as high as $500,000, but the Lane County part is, is three payments of eighty-four?
A total.
A total of eighty-four, but in three payments, totally eighty-four.
Yeah, see, most of the counties are considering a single payment because Lane County's portion is considerably higher than others. I think Douglas County and Jackson are the only two counties that actually pay more than Lane County. And I've expressed to the O.N.C. board the fiscal challenges that we are looking at. They offered some flexibility in that payment to be able to make it two or three payments.
And so what I just did, Commissioner Swanson, is that, because there was this little bit of confusion, is that I mentioned that even more flexibility would be if any motion would include the current budget year, FY sixteen, seventeen, FY seventeen, eighteen, because that would allow theoretically three different time periods where the money could come from, which would further ease it.
If it was ninety thousand, thirty thousand, in three payments?
Well, I'm just saying, yeah, for example, I'm just picking a random number, let's say that Mr. Mokaiewski could find ten or fifteen, or twenty thousand dollars in this year's budget, that would just mean that we would split the sixty-two thousand over the next two periods, so that, just to give as much flexibility as possible.
Will we get a contract for the eighty-four thousand, or how will that work? If we got a contract, then he could sign the contract and spend the eighty-four thousand over the period of time, but if we don't get a contract, then wouldn't we have to make that decision incrementally, and we'll have to put it in the budget this year, we'll have to put it in the budget next year?
I believe it was the intent to create a contract between us and participating with the O.N.C. counties. That way, it would also have the clawback provision that if this doesn't move forward, that our refund would be given back. So I believe it is the contract portion that you mentioned.
And I would say, I think we could just put together, if there's a motion, we could certainly create a document in the form of a board order that would say, for example, that the board authorizes payment as, you know, we do all the whereas's, and the money to be budgeted and subsequently approved as recommended by Mr. Mokaiewski in FY fourteen, fifteen--
Fifteen, sixteen.
Whatever, yeah. Or the next, the current budget year and the next two budget years. And then that would give him, that way you've capped your, that way the obligation is capped, and you could also make it, I'm sure, you could also say that would be contingent upon an agreement being signed. I'm assuming that what's happening is that there's going to be agreement with the O.N.C. organization and the law firm as opposed to every individual county, if that makes sense, rather than signing it into a total agreement with everybody who contributes money. I'm assuming it's going to be with the O.N.C. as well. And I can certainly, I give you my word, I could follow up on that. Go ahead and put it in the motion, if that's what you want.
So today's motion, then, it would sound like a motion to approve up to eighty-four thousand dollars to be distributed over fiscal years fifteen, sixteen, sixteen, seventeen, seventeen, eighteen, and to draw up a board order to reflect that the administrator agreed with a contract with the O.N.C. counties. Does that sound close?
I think if we, I think if the board, I think if the board simply authorized the payment of the money to the O.N.C. with the condition or understanding that the O.N.C. is going to contract with the law firm, that there would be this clawback provision that this commissioner mentioned, which is in the event that the O.N.C. counties agree that the decision by the BLM is acceptable, that the money would be returned to the counties. Which I understand is what's going to happen.
The line drift, but the contract would cover the three payments.
Yeah, the three payments is really just our portion of it, to give it to, I don't, O.N.C., as I understand, as long as they ultimately get the money, they, this is correct, Commissioner, correct me if I'm wrong, if they, as long as they get the money, they don't, at the end of the day, they're fine. The three, I mentioned the three things just to give us the most flexibility to find the money over three budget periods as opposed to two.
And that doesn't need to be included, does not need to be included in the--
No, I think it does. I think you hit the essential elements, that the board authorized the payment of no more than eighty-four thousand dollars to the O.N.C. counties in pursuit of this litigation, the money to come from wherever Mr. Mokaiewski determines, from those budget years that have been mentioned, those fiscal years fifteen, sixteen, sixteen, seventeen, seventeen, eighteen, contingent upon the contract, that there be a contract provision between the O.N.C. and the, it's still Reeves, isn't it? And still Reeves, the law firm representing O.N.C., that in the event that the decision is acceptable, that the money be refunded.
And if that decision is not acceptable--
Then the money would go, yeah, then it would be spent.
Okay. Essentially, it sounds like what I said, the act of the clawback, so. So then, do you need me to narrate that? I'm going to instruct the administrator to enter into a contract with O.N.C. counties for up to eighty-four thousand dollars to be distributed to the counties, to O.N.C. counties, over fiscal year fifteen, sixteen, sixteen, seventeen, seventeen, eighteen, to participate in litigation. In the event that litigation is not acceptable, then the money will be refunded to Lane County.
Okay. Is there a motion? Do we have a second?
Second.
So further discussion?
It is a lot of money, and spreading it out over three years doesn't make it less money. Makes it, it's like buying a car, I guess, you know, you burn slowly if you pay for it. But I guess the thing that is, that makes it more satisfactory is that if it's not successful, we're not satisfied, we get the money back. But if we are satisfied, then we probably get something significantly more than the eighty-four thousand dollars. That's the reason that I would make the motion, support the motion, is that it's, well, there's a lot of money spread out over three years, and we will have the clawback provision in case we're not successful, or we're not satisfied with the outcome.
Commissioner Swanson?
Correct me if I'm wrong, but we don't get the money back if we are unsuccessful.
Yeah, that's great. The reason we would get the money back would be is if the O.N.C. counties do not move forward with filing litigation.
So I'm going to vote no. I think a couple of things. One is, the money is an issue. It's all, money is always an issue, whether people say it's not an issue or not, so money's always an issue. Second thing is that we're, you know, we're just one of many participants in the management of federal lands in Oregon. We don't have to get involved in every fight that is present out there. There are plenty of other people that would like to live over the future of federal forests and BLM lands specifically. And last but not least, I think there is a lot of merit in thinking through whether we want to be part of a new round of timber wars or not. It's one thing for other people to be involved in a new round of timber wars, but is that really the function of a general-purpose government, that it's going to be reducing its services to the public this year because of downsizing, and is that really something we ought to be doing? And obviously, you know, four or five commissioners can come to different perceptions of that and decisions on that, and I certainly respect people's rights to express their point of view and vote accordingly, but I just feel like this is just going to be, we're suing the BLM because they're not putting out enough timber, they've been sued before because they've been putting out too much timber. Currently, they're putting out the amount of timber that they should put out, balancing all of the federal court cases that have ordered them to put more out and less out. So to me, it's, you know, other people are going to do it anyway, so why do we have to put into it? And also, why do we have to show and model that we want to sue the BLM, as opposed to having the reality that other people are going to be doing it anyway? So, I don't know. I'm not comfortable with it.
Okay. Commissioner Swanson?
Thank you, Mr. Chair. To be honest with you, sometimes I'm torn on this, but really, I think where we are today is, we obviously have a White House and Congress that do not have an appetite to look for what I would call a comprehensive tax reform in the U.S. And right now, I don't think this is about timber wars. What I think this is, is a statement about really rural America basically saying that we're in trouble here, and unless those that we rely on as our partners step up to the plate and actually honor commitments that have been made over the years, then I think they have left us without a choice. The last thing we need is another issue that just happened in Harney County, and it would be horrible to happen in a county like Lane County where you have the significant urban area. And so I just don't, I think what this is, is a potential statement, and I would agree, it's money that, it is a lot of money, especially considering the, what we talked about here a couple of weeks ago as far as potential forecasts. But the other thing, too, is that it's very obvious in Salem, there is no, and again, there's zero appetite for what I would call comprehensive tax reform in this state. And what we have before us is low property tax rates, that's what we have. We have the government and the legislature that are interested in pursuing other things, and they're not interested in coming down, in actually talking about all of the state of Oregon and what they can do to benefit all of us. Right now, you know, whether it gets put on the, referred to get put on the ballot or not, the two-dollar minimum, if you will, for property tax, I don't know what's going to happen there. You know, I hear Commissioner Brock Smith, he was optimistic, but I heard that last session, and nothing happened. And so I think this is, as much as anything, this is a statement to make. It's not dollars that I'd like to spend, but at times I feel like we're left without choices, and so I'm going to vote to support this, but I will say that this may be one of the last times I do, because if our partners in D.C. just can continue to turn their backs on us, we're going to have to go down another road, in that, in whether that is lobbying Salem to really put forth a comprehensive tax reform or something. But, you know, I'm just tired of hearing Washington, D.C. over and over again say, "We can't, we can't," yet they're somehow able to come up with four trillion dollar budgets, and they leave rural America in the dust, and that's just wrong. While we are part of the second-largest metro area in the state, Lane County, for the most part, eighty percent of the land base here in Lane County is in rural America, and fifty-four percent is owned by the federal government. So I, at this point, I think that we're left without choices, and I just feel like this, this is just a, it's at least a strategic move on our part, but I will say, my appetite is, I'm losing my appetite to be supporting this over and over again, only to get punched in the teeth by D.C., so I'll do it one more time.
Okay. If I might, Mr. Chair, I appreciate the comments, and I have just a little bit different view on this. This isn't really about whether or not we want to dictate what type of management policy the federal government has. To me, this is standing up for an asset which is, belongs to, at this point, the counties. We have a law on the books, nineteen thirty-seven O.N.C. Act, that strictly was formed for counties that have, eighteen counties that have that O.N.C. land in it. And that act was created to acknowledge that that land was in private ownership, and it was taken back, and the act was created to compensate the counties for, in essence, that land coming off the tax rolls and making it very difficult for counties to continue to provide services. So essentially, we have this asset that the law requires that land to be managed sustainably, the timber to be managed for sustainable harvest, and seventy-five percent, actually seventy-five percent of that resource is to come to the counties. So I look at this as an obligation. This would be no different than they putting hypothetically a large amount of money, or some amount of money, in the bank, buying a C.D., and essentially, we're all going along really great, and I have an agreement, a contract with the bank, to manage that money for a certain rate of return, and suddenly they just determine that they don't want to manage that any longer at that obligation, and they change the outcome of what's coming. And I think that each of us would probably challenge, stand up for what is rightfully belongs to us personally if we were in that situation, and I believe that's the same situation that we're in today. We have a law on the books, and until that law is changed by the federal government, because either they can't meet that obligation, I think we have an obligation to the citizens of this county to defend what is rightfully theirs at this point. And if it changes because the leaders in this country deem that that is not possible to do anymore, then that's a different story, and we have a different conversation. But until that takes place, I think we have an obligation, personally, I believe we have an obligation, to defend that asset for the citizens, because it is what was what this county would pay a great deal-- county paid a great deal amount of the services that we were able to provide was with that money. So, I mean, each of us have a little different perspective, but for me, that's where it really boils down to, and whether it's, you know, the change in force management policy and we don't need to be a part of it, or whether it's a concern about the ability for the federal government to function. Those are great opinions, but I really think we need to focus on, on the fact that that is an asset to this county, and I believe we have an obligation to protect it until that asset disappears. Commissioner Sorenson?
Did you get a first round?
I did, yeah.
Okay.
I'll go for the second.
I think I'll pass on the second round.
Okay. Commissioner Far?
Thank you. You know, all three of you make great cases. And once again, this is a lot, a lot of money that we're talking about right here, but the fact is, Oregon has a tax system that doesn't work, and it's no more evident than it is right here in this room in Lane County that the tax system in Oregon doesn't work. The fact that the federal government is precipitating it down hard on us by not giving us the money they promised us is causing our county to be a less safe county, less responsive to human service needs, less responsive to behavioral health needs, less responsive to parks and roads, less responsive to all the things that we are mandated to do and all the things that we want to do. And whether or not this eighty-four thousand dollars comes back to us in the form of a, in the form of a change in heart by the B L M, that remains to be seen. But the fact is, we have to rattle this tape. I believe we have to send out the message that we can't stand for that anymore. We are being forced into the realms of the poorhouses by the federal government in this case and by the tax system in Oregon. I don't see a change in Oregon's tax system in the near future. We're going to rely on property taxes, and we're going to rely on income tax, and the legislature is going to try to pile on income tax, and it's going to try to do what it can with property taxes, but our hands are more tied there. And so consequently, we have got to do something. And like in, working with a bank, with your own family's bank finances, that's probably pretty similar to the way it is. You know, if somebody said, well, you know what? You plan your entire budget based upon what we said we were going to do, and now you have to change your budget. Now you have to pull the sheriff deputies off the street, now you have to go with one Waymaster in the entire county, now you have to close down some of your human services, and you cannot deal with homeless situation, the homeless situation, the way you should be able to deal with the homeless situation. And the fact is, we have a broken tax system in Oregon that does not work, it's made worse by, by voter mandated tax measures, and, and the federal government is just making it worse by, by choking the, the stream of revenue that this county should be getting. And once again, whether or not the eighty-four thousand dollars comes back in terms of the change of heart, the change of practice by the B L M, that remains to be seen. But in the meantime, we need to join with other counties and make a strong statement that this is, this is the end of the road as far as our tolerance. So I don't know which way I'm going to vote.
Other comments? Seeing none, I'll call for the vote. All in favor?
I.
I. Opposed?
No.
Passes three to one, I'd like to acknowledge that Commissioner Bozovich is excused.
So what I will do, Chair, is I'll draft a, I'll draft, I'll draft an order consistent with this, a port order for this, and then present, and then make it available to you next week.
Okay.
Because I'm going to be gone, but I'll make, I'll do that before I do--
All right. Thank you.
All right. And I'll make sure I, I'll run it through Mr. McGeiski.
So is there any other business really good of the order?
Well, I just want to say something about the Waymaster alone. You know, the fact that we have to cut down to one Waymaster, we have, that makes it unsafe for people who live in rural areas of this county, because it's much easier for truck drivers to stretch rules. Just you take that one, that one issue alone, and, and what is happening to us by this, by the way the B L M is working their rules, is making it unsafe for people to drive their kids to school in Lane County. The bottom line is, is just not working. And we've already passed the, passed the motion, but, but it really is frustrating. You know, I speak to people, I spoke to a man who lives outside of Cottage Grove yesterday, and he's worried about the roads. He's worried about the fact that, that trucks are driving on the roads without, without being controlled by, without the ways being controlled. And that's one tiny little element of what we have to cut. And that's something that people don't really think about. You know, we shut down our parks with regularity, we, we cut back maintenance on our parks with regularity, and it's just making this a less livable place in terms of recreational activity and significantly in terms of safety. So it's aggravating to me, and it's something that we have to make a strong statement regarding.
I appreciate your comments. I don't want to give the impression that we're not out there checking trucks, because in Cottage Grove, we do have a way station that's open one to two days a week. It just depends on how our single Waymaster deems to spend their time. And then we also have, the Department of Transportation does come down and do spot checks a little bit more frequently than when we had. So we, it's not optimal, and I agree a hundred percent, but there, we are, I don't want to give the impression that we're not, we're not trying to keep people accountable.
We have a single Waymaster, I don't think we have two.
Right. All right. So seeing no more discussion, I will adjourn the meeting. Thank you very much.
Thank you.